If you'd give us a prayer, that'd be awesome.
Dear Father in heaven, we are grateful to be here together as council members and to be able to discuss issues that the town needs to make decisions on. May they bless us with understanding and with capacity to discern the difficulties that might be arising and be able to make proper decisions for our citizens. May they bless all those in our town who are suffering at this time and for various reasons. And may they bless those who are recovering from illness and illnesses that are maybe blessed also. And we pray for the Spirit to be with us in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Well, welcome to council. Thanks to Jan and maybe Rich for the chocolates. I don't know.
No.
Rich claims he did it all.
It's Jan.
Welcome Cory from the media. And we've got an agenda that shouldn't take a ton of times, but we'll get through it as quick as we can. So additions and options to the agenda, we have one addition that I know of, and that's seven D library council barns will be talking to us about this. Okay, so anything else? We'll accept a motion for adoption of the agenda.
I put a motion forward.
Counselor Drew, all in favor? There are no delegations, but we'll be pleased to hear from wonderful Alex about the golf course right now if he wants to. This will be on seven A. We're going to do that early so Alex can get home for supper with his wife and baby. Take it away.
All righty.
There is a thing in your package, by the way, on the golf course.
I got you. I was like, I'm giving you. Well, I guess thanks for having me here tonight. The discussion, to my knowledge, is that of what the appetite is for hole sixteen and the clubhouse construction that has been talked about. As you can see behind you, we have a plan, a tentative plan of hole number sixteen, what it would look like. And we've seen a couple of clubhouse options, fairly rough options at this point, just kind of generic golf plans, average score total. I spoke with my advisory committee today, this would be a text message or any beforehand. We do have two members that you should all be aware of. And after speaking with them, the common appetite of that advisory committee is that we pursue hole sixteen first. That being said, they do recognize that there is still a great need to have both be done just for the condition of the clubhouse and for the condition of hole sixteen, their both, like I say, entire need of being reconstructed. The reasoning, some of the reasoning rationale behind reconstructing hole sixteen first is that it's a more palatable number. It's kind of two hundred and eighty was our quote plus we were looking at reducing some of those costs by having our town staff and some of our equipment lower some of those costs of like earth moving or earth hauling. You can save some funds there. Brandon's been in touch with the designers on the whole to see what those numbers exactly are. I don't have them on at this point, but that was four hundred seventy, I recall. There was a settlement. Yeah, like half and something like that.
So essentially, the high number is two hundred and eighty thousand. That's a high number.
Yes. And from our view, again, that's not to say that the clubhouse could be adjusted to fit the need of or the funds. So if we had four hundred thousand, we could build a clubhouse to that size. If we had five billion, we could build a nice clubhouse to that size. Just with our plans that we have seen, it seems the total cost is somewhere around six hundred to one point five for a modest one. And then if Delbert Beazer is able to obtain funds and fund the clubhouse, I think his price range was around two point two, if you ever take you had a range, the low and highs are one point eight to two point five. And so again, one of the pros is being the cost. Another one is that during the construction of hole sixteen, if you want to just look over to that map quick, go see where the number.
Maps in your package too.
You'll see the hole number sixteen is.
Right behind Rich. There's a red rider BB gun in the eye.
So if you just take a peek over there, there is the proposed hole sixteen. This is the current one. And speaking with the designers, we would be able to construct this without affecting play on the existing hole number sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. So we could have trucks in there and different things, but it wouldn't make us a seventeen hole golf course for the year, which can be put the opposite of the bed.
So your tee off boxes have stayed in the same area?
For hole sixteen with the current tentative plans, there might be a little bit of work that needs to be done to access them a little bit better. Currently, you hike through some trees to get up to the far tee boxes.
And the burn will stay the same?
It might be a little bit adjusted as well.
Okay.
There are a few changes that, again, we still have to iron up closer to it. That's just our tentative plan at this point. Again, overall, the main, the main ideas we have to take away from this is just that we do really feel the need for both, but we recognize that money doesn't grow on trees. And so that's why we're looking at something that's a little more easy to digest when it comes to costs and somewhat responsible. And it can leave opportunity to springboard for more funds in the event that people want to come and see this.
Okay, we'll take questions. Go ahead.
Okay. Maybe I misunderstood this, but in our planning session, I thought we were sort of committed to the notion that leave Delbert alone and let him see how much money he can raise, and we won't talk about it until they exhaust all those avenues in terms of the clubhouse. Did I, did I misunderstand that?
No, you did not.
That's what was said.
And again, these are all conjectures. The clubhouse at one point five depends on fantasy of clubhouse that Delbert wants to raise money for. I don't foresee, we didn't really foresee that the town would be kicking in on that thing anytime soon. I'm still a little concerned at the cost of sixteen, but we have to have an eighteen hole course. When the taxpayers see two hundred and eighty thousand dollars to fix a golf course, that's going to be, we'll get the phones ringing on that one. Another question?
Okay. I beg to differ a little bit in terms of how much work we could actually do on that with what maybe Les is suggesting. He probably doesn't want to have his crew move unless he's guaranteed a certain amount of money. But I tend to think that we could start doing some stuff ourself as a town crew on number sixteen this year. Seventeen, number sixteen, the current one, would still be in play all year long anyway. And I would tend to think that we would try to do as much of that work as we possibly can before we hire it out.
The one thing we'd have to look at is getting some formal design done because we need all the elevations.
That's a problem.
Which might be a, I'll charge eight thousand, I'll drop thirty thousand bucks for design. It would probably be somewhere in that range, ten to fifteen percent of the project. Well, actually, it might have been broken out on this, but the other thing we've always made the assumption of is that we have to use less.
Yeah, that's right.
If it's necessarily the case. I mean, he designed the course, don't get me wrong.
He has the staples that we could mirror.
But it, you know, it doesn't mean that he has to be the one to design this hole. But so yes, there is, and in his quote, there is five, seven, there's seventeen thousand dollars, eighteen thousand dollars in site prep, another forty-five thousand dollars in earthworks. So those are some pieces we could take, but we just, we'd have to know the elevations of everything and where that was and how much we're taking out, how much we're putting in, all that stuff.
Okay, so.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I'm just wondering, what is the timeframe we're looking at? Because the budget is near. Complete, balanced, after having trimmed as much fat as we could? And two hundred and eighty thousand dollars to add to that budget has me concerned.
Just, Mr. Jeff.
Yes.
We did inquire to Mr. Beazer about if they'd be interested as an association group of taking on fundraising for hole sixteen. And his answer, rightfully so, was they'd rather just focus on the clubhouse. They don't want the money to water it right now, and they'd rather keep focused on the one item. So we did inquire to see if that was a priority for the association, and it doesn't appear to be.
Maybe, yeah.
It would be my recommendation that we pursue this to the extent that we'll do as much as we can within our own budget and guise capability. And then I think projecting out, if we're looking at doing the finishing touches on it, it would be in 2021.
So we have a little bit of reserve in recreation fund, but I think that's already kind of spoken for, but I don't know.
Are we talking to the venture at all for this?
Well, you know, I mean, we have to kind of be careful there too.
I understand that, but it's also two hundred and eighty thousand dollars that we haven't budgeted for.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have it in front of me, and I apologize. I believe you have about ninety thousand dollars in reserves for the golf course.
For the golf course alone?
For the golf course itself, I believe it's ninety thousand dollars. And they're restricted as it's the golf course, but they're not restricted any further than that, let's put it that way. And then the other thing, I'm just thinking all the council itself was saying, you've got that, which we haven't allocated to anything at this point.
Well, we have now, apparently.
And you have council approved capital in every given year, which I don't like to earmark early in the year because if we ever have a wreck, we'd like to know what's there. We didn't access it in 2019 at all, but that means we didn't have to tax to replenish it in 2020, which was good. So, I mean, there is a little bit of C funding there is what I'm, what I'm saying is, is there potentially a hundred thousand dollars between those two things or a hundred and twenty thousand dollars recently that we can get designed down so that we know our elevations and then see between Miles and Brandon.
Right.
Miles has done course construction before, so that's not a new thing for him. And Brandon is good with, you know, as far as managing some of those details like elevation and where are you going to be with that? So we could try and pursue that a bit.
Okay, so as mentioned by council itself, are we looking at 2021 then to have this done, or are we trying to do it next year?
Would you like us to budget for the design in 2020?
What's, what?
Out of golf course reserves, so it won't impact your bottom line of your budget. It'll just deplete some reserve.
So.
So sixteen is still good enough to use right now.
Yeah, it's okay. It's got, it's got a crunch on it. There's a big issue with play is this, this section of the fairway right there.
Yeah.
It's sloping.
Is not usable anywhere in that section, which is the main landing area for anyone from these tee boxes. And I would probably say roughly sixty to seventy percent of any ball that's hit in the fairway will end up in the thick rough and more likely end up getting lost or they'll take some time searching for it. The width of the fairway has probably been cut off by a third to a half in some areas.
Is this slumping?
And it's turned to thick grass because we can't maintain it with, maintain it with mowers. It's like three feet down in sections from where our existing fairway is, but that's.
So if we have to, we can still use it though. It won't, it'd be a very challenging hole. Right.
It will, it'll work. We could make it work indefinitely.
We use it, we use it the last few years.
We understand, but it needs to be changed because we're breaking pipes and the slumping and everything else. Just a matter of when we have the money for it. Yep, go ahead.
I just want to ask a question regarding the ventures. You brought it up. What would constitute a need to use it, Mayor? Because whenever the venture is brought up, you always poo-poo the idea.
No, I don't poo-poo the idea. I'm, I'm very cautious.
I understand.
Of adding taxes to the present taxation level of our citizens. And I think if we can do without using that resource, when there is no revenue coming to offset that, I'm cautious. If you have a debenture that's going to add miles of sewer line or whatever, you have to do it by necessity.
Well, that's all, that's really what I was asking.
Really.
What constitutes that you have to use?
Well, necessity, like water treatment plant or sewer treatment plant, those type of thing, I think are necessities.
They've actually outlined if there was a debenture, what it would cost us on a yearly basis over twenty-five years.
Yeah.
Counselor Drew.
Do you want to go first?
Yeah. Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
I just was saying that I would personally want to see a study done and get moving with the ninety thousand dollar that we have and make a recommendation to council to ask administration to look into the preparatory work and costing of it for remediation of hole sixteen.
Any other stick comments on this? That would be your recommendation? Do we build on that, on a recommendation we do, don't we?
Yeah, you vote on recommendation.
Any other comments on that? So the recommendation would be that council would take that ninety thousand dollars that we have set aside for a golf course, emergency fund, whatever you want to call it, and use that to start getting things rolling on hole sixteen. Is that correct? See all in favor? Okay, and I see none opposed. We'll move on then. Anything else on golf course before we move on? Okay, we'll see you later then, Alex, unless you want to stick around and listen to us.
Thanks, Alex.
Okay, let's move on to number five, adoptions of the minute from November fifth, two thousand nineteen. Looked at them very briefly. I didn't see anything that was too much out of order that I could see. Counselor Brown, you making that motion?
I make a motion to accept the minutes of November fifth, two thousand nineteen.
All in favor? Passed. Okay, six, did you want to talk to this, Jeff, a little bit? By law, the renumeration one?
Yep, you'd like there, let me just get where I'm going. So after our discussion last meeting, Joe and I just put a couple of, and disregard some of the blue strike through and all that stuff, but we put in a couple of paragraphs. We know it's not going to clarify and fix everything because there's a million scenarios in compensation. So we tried to capture defining what the annual payment was for. That seemed to be one of the big pieces. And then, so under number two, we talked about the two categories, your annual amount, and then the second is anything above and beyond what was described above, the additional monthly meetings. And that was the rec, that's the changes that we made thus far. The only other thing we changed near the end was that the mayor or the chair will look at balancing responsibilities based on the preference of the counselor, based on the time availability of the counselor, you know, those kinds of things. But it kind of went without saying, but we said it, just so it was in the policy.
Yes.
I have a few questions regarding this that may need a little bit of clarification from us. So the first thing that I was wondering, sometime we have committees that are assigned to us that are annually only one meeting or they're quarterly, one meeting every quarter. So I was wondering, if those meetings go past four hours, how do we want to treat them? Do we want to treat them as part of the quarterly without additional per diem because it's only one meeting every three months, one meeting a year, rather than one meeting a month? How do you want to do that so that we can clarify that aspect?
So you're saying if it's only a quarterly meeting, it actually goes more than four hours, should we be claiming that as a?
Right, because normally it's part of your quarterly, right?
Okay. Any thoughts on that?
Counselor Bangle.
I have two committees that do that. Levit irrigation is one time a year, and I don't.
No matter what the time is?
Yeah, and I haven't claimed anything because it usually runs about three and a half hours. And then I have ORSC, who is quarterly, and they, they run about a three hours.
And then you have the traveling.
Yeah, and that's three to four hours.
So then it makes you five hours.
Yeah.
But you do submit for travel.
Yes, I do.
Okay. So are you okay with that, that we leave it as part of the quarterly and regardless of the time? Okay, so that clarified that question. Thanks.
As long as it's not a twenty-four hour meeting, you're good to go.
Yeah, no, well, those are little things, you know? If we don't clarify them, we forever going to wonder. Then the subcommittees of monthly committee. So if I understand right, if the committee meeting is in a month and in session, so you have, for example, your, your meeting, Counselor Salk, that you have in Lasbridge, South Grove, for example, to take an example. If you have the committee meeting in session that month and you have a subcommittee, then you will claim the per diem. One to four hours is a half day. Over that is a whole per diem, full per diem.
I believe that was a discussion we had last week.
We're okay with that, right?
Well, and in that case, Counselor Self brought that to council for approval before he.
Yes.
Sat on the subcommittee.
Right.
You'd agree collectively to pay his additional costs for it.
It was an approved thing, so.
That was the same for me with the Chinook.
And we also said, if there was no meeting that month, one of those extra subcommittee meeting will replace the regular meeting. We agreed on that, so that's no problem. What I was wondering is, when you are on the executive of one of the committees or on a finance, finance committee for something, if I remember our conversation, if the meeting is the same day as a regular meeting and together they last up to four hours, it's part of the quarterly and you claim mileage. But if the executive meeting plus your regular meeting goes over four hours, then you should claim the per diem. Is that clear?
I think that's what we were talking about, yeah.
Okay, so we're clear on this one, so that's good. So the yearly conferences, we need to kind of make sure that we really understand where we're going there because that causes us all sorts of discussion every year, and I really think we need to put it on paper once and for all. When we go to a UMA or to the library conference or to FCSs conference, any sort of those conferences that are outside the town. When we go to Calgary, we always have claim up to now a half day, although we're overnighting because we have the town pay for the hotel and for the meal. Are we okay with that?
You're talking about the half day for travel.
Yeah.
In Edmonton, of course, it'd be a full day because it's not much for.
Okay. Are we okay with that? Okay, so we're not claiming to Calgary a full day just because.
You got to get there. Yeah.
Right? So we're okay, we're clear with that, no problem.
We just, just for the, we get the mileage for that one.
And you get, you get mileage and, and the per diem.
But on that, can I add to that though?
Yeah, go ahead.
Counselor Brown.
I just have a question before you go to the next one. So on that though, I do think it's important on when we're, that we do our best to combine vehicles, so not, we're not paying for people mileage because we have, you know what I mean? Like.
Yeah.
I just think less vehicles are better because mileage is what really burns up the money pretty fast.
Well, this is what it says inside there, that we should be conscientious when claiming that and do the best to capool as much as possible, right?
I think for a lot of us, unless they've got outside meetings, that's the only time we'd ever claim mileage per diem. So, I mean, once a year, I might claim because my wife likes to go to Edmonton with me and spend a week. I don't have a problem with that. I mean, we are taking a week away from our family. So I don't see that as a huge issue. I mean, we combine as much as we can for local meetings, that's great.
Well, that, that's a whole, I mean, Counselor Brown has a point too, right? Because the policy was always written in a way that tried to, to reduce as much of the cost as possible.
I think we do that as a council. I don't see as frivolously claiming for mileage that I'm aware of.
I mean, so it's not, I'm not quite finished, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Because the more we clarify, the less question we'll have afterwards when we, we do our claim because it always have been an irritant for some. So the next one is a conference day, the last day of conference. When we come back, we come back from Calgary, the trip is two and a half hours. We've been there in a meeting from eight to four. So we claim at that point eight to one or eight to twelve. Right, it's short. But then we have another two and a half hours. So it's a full day. What happened when we, when you are in Edmonton?
Yeah.
Six hour travel, four hours meeting, you're over the eight hours. Are we okay to call it a full day?
I've never claimed for more than a day on that.
But are we okay with that?
Counselors.
Okay. We're okay with that? So I think that should have sorted out a few, few things and made it a little clearer.
Okay, Counselor Bangle.
Counselor.
Myself and Counselor Drew serve with the Chinook Foundation. They have a quarterly zone conference. They also have a convention. And I've always claimed my convention fees and my mileage and everything against the Chinook Foundation, and they've paid it because they're a requisitioning board. Now, I'm not wondering if we should look at that and really seriously deal with that, that our requisitioning boards that we serve on pay when we go to those conferences and, and so forth.
How does that deal with the other people in my grounds, Raymond and whatever?
They do the same thing.
Okay, well.
So indirectly, we're still paying as a town.
Well, yes.
But it's coming out of the boards which are independent, which is kind of been the way it's been all along, right?
Yep.
Counselor Brown.
Well, I can speak on FCSs because I'm on that board, and I just got back from that conference. And I hand in all of my receipts to Tara Thiessen, who's over the FCSs, and my, I took the town car up, so the mileage isn't because we took the town car up. And the gas and all of that comes out of FCSs. It doesn't come out of me as a counselor. The only thing that comes out of this is the per diems for me to go out. But the mileage, my food, everything else, gas, is all taken care of.
Yep.
Not all requisitioning boards are equal. The Chinook Foundation requisitions us a lot. The South Grove initiative is like a buck fifty, so.
Well, I think, I think we'd have to take that into mind, Counselor Self.
Well, that's what I'm saying. So if you're asking me, well, I had to go to South Grove, so you got to pay for everything. Then I say, well, you know, get off because we don't have that much dough.
Yeah. Thoughts on that?
No, I meant, there is a point well taken there.
Well, I would suggest then that for the big requisitioners, if that's what you want to call it, that they would pay if the month, if we're not being requisitioned a whole lot, then maybe councils will pick that up.
But we've, we've approved that through this meeting for Counselor Self, so it's not a, it's not an issue.
So is there?
Is there anything else?
Well, if at any time we happen to go to a meeting for the school division, then we can requisition, they are a good requisitioner. We can charge them. That may never, ever happen, so.
Anything else? What do we need to do with this? Jeff, you got those recommendations down?
Yeah.
We can move forward with that then? We'll look at that next meeting, then when we get action to motion.
Is there any reason why?
I just wanted to ask a question because, I mean, I have conferences with the library board. And I feel like a beggar every time I come and ask if I can attend. And I, I don't think I should. And I, I don't think I should have to do that. I think that if I'm part of that board, then I should be going to those conferences.
Is the board paying for your conference?
No, they pay for my rooms and stuff like that, but they don't pay my per diems.
I, I still, again, if you let council know, there's never been a time.
Well, that's what I'm trying to tell you, you know, each, each time, it's the same every year, but I have to come with, you know, hat in hand to ask for permission to attend those things, is that?
We are responsible to the public purse.
I really?
And I don't think we've ever turned you down.
No, you haven't. But there's a lot of discussion about it every time.
You shouldn't feel like you have to come hat in.
Yeah.
Yeah, Counselor Silk.
Any consolation to you, then we're all beggars?
That's from the Book of Mormon, right?
I don't think anybody in council here is gonna.
Any of those meetings, we all have to come to council.
Okay, just so I understand.
I don't think anybody in council is gonna abuse that, but I still think it's nice to let council know what's coming up and they can just throw a quick.
This is where, this is where it needs to be taken care of.
Yeah. Yes, Counselor.
But at the same token, we need to be careful how we volunteer to be on some of these different boards and stuff because it can take up a lot of time and it can cost a lot of money. I've been asked if I would serve on ASHs direct board and I've always declined because of the time involvement and the money involved.
Well, I think as a council, every town's in the same boat. If we're gonna be on these committees and these boards, it behooves us to be part of it. If you, if they would like you in an executive position and we want our say at it, we need to do that. I don't know if they're just frivolously handing out whatever's out there, but I think it just enhances the meeting for us and for the town.
I think it's really important that when we're asked to serve on these subcommittees from the boards that we're on, that we really seriously consider the privilege it is to serve on those. And I just want to point out, Counselor Bangry, he's very studious and he, he, he does a good job on whatever committee. And those boards really need the best possibly we can give them.
And we are the best.
And, and if we don't, they're gonna get other people that are just, you know, a body in a chair. And, and I go to some of these meetings and, and, you know, my finance committee for, for one. I'll sit there and I'll listen and then I have lots of comments and I, and I'll look around, there's some that, they're just filling a seat every, every meeting, you know? And, and, and then they'll vote to approve whatever. But I think it's important that our input is there because they are a requisitioning board and we are responsible to them. And so I think that it's important that we really seriously consider when the opportunity is there for us.
Bottom line is whenever you, anybody's had that opportunity, you've always brought it back to council.
Yeah.
And council approves it, so, or doesn't approve it, I don't know if I'm even, having approved somebody being on an executive board, but.
My final comment to that, Counselor Barnes, is yes, I agree with you because it gives a rural identity.
Exactly.
And most of these boards are made up of city individuals. They, they're not worried about what's happening in the rural communities.
Okay, anything else before we move on?
Hold the purse a little tighter.
Well, let's go to other business, we've already talked about the golf course. Anything else we need to talk on that one? Historical Society, Jeff found a letter from two thousand and six. You can find that in your things and point three is the one that they brought up to me, and that's, I guess that, that's for us as well. The town continues to maintain the yard and continue the fifty-five hundred dollar annual payment provided as available through FCSs. Now, there's the.
Provided.
Yeah, there's, and it's not being provided through FCSs. However, if we ever decide to withhold the funding on that, we might wind up with that building back in our lap. Something else to consider. Jeff, did you want to speak to this at all, you're fine? Go ahead, Counselor Silk.
Could we speak to point one, the Historical Society provides a sustainable business plan?
They.
Outlining business and operating costs and showing where the money is coming from?
They actually have that. That's, that's been, that's, we should, that's been given to the town, hasn't it?
Yeah, but it talks about.
He's got a five, we put together a three-year or five-year plan that outlines that. Yeah, go ahead, Counselor.
My concern is every year that we're providing summertime help and that's quite costly. Jeff, can you give us a rundown on what it costs us for?
We've got a small table in there, twenty nineteen is eighteen thousand dollars. Twenty nine, twenty twenty is projected a little more because.
So that's over and above the fifty-five hundred dollars.
Oh yeah, we gave forty-two hundred dollars last year and then eighteen thousand more for wages, which has been consistent for quite some time. We've paid that summer staff for a lot of the time.
Keep in mind that summer staff does not cover all the hours. There's a lot of volunteer hours when they're not around. I guess the bottom line is, Counselor, we, we value the courthouse and the.
Absolutely.
Card home being open during the summer. Because with, if we don't pay it, it's not gonna be open. Those people are already kind of stretched the limit over there. And most of them are older than me and that's old, so.
So I guess my question is, I wasn't on council when this all came to be, but my question would be, why did we, we're pretty much paying for it.
They wanted it.
It feels like it. So the question is, why, why don't we own it? Do they have it so that they can get extra funding for it? Was that what it boiled down to?
Well, that's heading for the afternoon to have to worry about too.
Because it feels.
There is a board.
If I can. It feels that we just keep giving them more money and I'm not saying that they're not stepping up and they're not doing things to try and create money because I've seen it, they're fantastic. But it, it just seems like if this is our sister, that we're taking care of it and it's expected that we are taking care of it because, I mean, look at the money we're throwing at it.
Well, if, if I may, because I'm on that board, that money is strictly for utilities and insurance. It's not for anything else.
Agreed. But, so, but, so why?
So they could access.
So this occurred a little bit before my time.
Yeah, before mine too.
It was David Edmunds at the time, who was president of the Historical Society. And the feeling of the day, and I think it was largely correct at the time, was that if they were, if they were as a society, if they owned the building, they had access to some funding that they didn't have otherwise when it was municipally owned. And that largely was what they needed to redo the sandstone on the exterior because if I'm not mistaken, they got just a little over a hundred thousand dollars for that project at the time. And it was important that they were in, that the society had control of the facility. And so in oh-six, they negotiated with the town to buy it for a dollar, but with some support conditions, which you see there, that's the whole agreement, as far as I understand it.
Yes.
So it was fairly simple. And then FCSs in, I want to say twenty twelve, I don't know, Joe, somewhere in that area, fourteen, changed a lot. That's when handy buses no longer fund that, Historical Societies, Dare, Dare Program, Lock, Parent, they changed some of their scope and that went away.
Was that at a provincial level?
Yeah, it was, at a provincial level, we couldn't fund those anymore. And so the town then, the Historical Society at the day, and I don't remember who the president was at the time because I believe Dave Edmunds was on council at the time. They didn't expect the whole fifty-five hundred anymore. I think they, well, we were paying them about thirty-seven hundred at the time, but there, I think that's caught up to them on an operational level, would be my, my feeling on it.
Who came out, was it Diane, was there after? Diane was there right after Dave, I believe.
Pardon me?
Wasn't Diane the president right after Dave, yeah?
Yeah.
So, yeah, they're struggling to stay afloat and they're, they're doing what they can, they have fundraisers. On the back page of that, you can actually see their expenses that they've shot out there. Counselor Silk.
So, to move this ahead.
Please do.
If we committed to the fifty-five hundred that was historically given to them, even though it was FCSs funding, would that be enough? Or is that going to?
This year they're looking for fifty-seven hundred.
Right.
So it's in that ballpark.
And that's actually in your budget.
I know. But if we were to say to them, you know, you're right, you bring this up, it's a good point, it was under FCSs, we can commit to that after twenty twenty.
Yep, go ahead, and I have a comment on it too.
Now, Mr. Chairman, we've lost a couple volunteers who were very strong volunteers.
Rita was one of them, she was very good.
Yes. And my concern is, are, do we need to look at this budget a little bit more in-depth and consider that summertime help?
As far as what?
As far as more money contributed for support because that museum, it's, it's been noted that during the summertime, when they have an interpretive person over here in the museum, that down at the card home, they'll send those tourists up to this museum and they found that it's locked a lot of the times and they'll walk away, never go in there.
During the summer, it should be open. They've got three people that we hire and they're usually, they rotate them around, but I do know that whenever they needed volunteers to fill in the extra hour or two and whoever's gone for a day or something, they seem to find it. I don't think it's been locked up that much that I'm aware of.
It's been a few years since then happened.
Counselor Drew.
Can I just ask a question? We pay, you said that we pay their utilities?
And insurance.
And insurance.
Is there any way that we can solar power that building with our?
So we, we, we pay their utilities in so much as we give the money to pay their utilities. Let's put it that way, so we don't get their utility bill?
No.
But to your question.
I'm just thinking about saving.
Did we add that, Joe? I don't think we did add it to the solar farm because it wasn't our building, so we weren't allowed under the microgen regulation to do it. We looked at it, Counselor Bangry brought that up a little while ago.
Yeah, you did.
And the microgen regulation didn't allow us to do it. We do have the library, I believe, included in the solar farm, but not the museum.
Okay, to kind of put this to bed a little bit, we'll let Counselor Silk talk in a second here. Part of the reason that the costs have gone up is because that building was reassessed at much, at a higher level.
On insurance.
And on the insurance. And that's what, that's basically the bulk of why this is going up, not anything else. Counselor Silk.
What's the number?
For what?
What are they asking for?
Fifty-seven hundred.
I know, but going on, and I'm not talking about next year, I'm talking about in perpetuity.
Whatever it's gonna cost them for utilities and insurance, that's what they're gonna ask for.
Okay.
If it goes up, goes down, that's what it's gonna be.
I will vouch, that insurance went up considerably.
Yeah.
As will all of ours in the new year.
It did, yeah.
So again, as far as I can tell, the current board's doing a very good job of trying to increase money, but three bucks a popper to come listen to somebody talk, then sell a few cookies on the side, it's not gonna raise them a ton of money.
So would it be fair to say that we will fund their utilities and their insurance in the going future?
I would say that's fair, but then we have to look at all scenarios. If they run into other issues with that building, what do we do with it? The building is not ideal for a museum. It's a beautiful building, it's, it's historic and that's why the museum's in there. Right now, I think we're fine with the way it's just utilities and insurance, but I don't know if I would tie it down to just that. I don't think they're gonna ask for anything more. I think we could deal with that on a, on a, you know, whatever basis comes up on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So maybe, why don't we leave it the way it is?
I agree.
So send us a letter and we decide what to do with it.
I will explain to them that the current formula doesn't work because FCSs is not doing it. It's just, that, that's out, whatever they, whatever you dug up there.
Just leave it the way it is.
I agree. Anything else on that?
So I interpret that correctly. Leaving it the way it is means they're getting the fifty-seven hundred dollars they requested in twenty twenty?
Yes.
I'm okay with it, I really am.
I think we already approved, I think we already approved it, didn't we?
Well, they sent a letter a couple of months ago, Blaine sent one.
Yeah.
We didn't formally respond because the answer was let's look at the budget and see where it's at.
Right.
All right.
But it's in the budget.
So should we make a recommendation at this time?
Okay, so.
You know, I also.
It's approved in your budget.
Yeah, it's already approved.
Again, I don't know how, I'm on that board, but I'm not on the finances. I never even got the two thousand and nineteen till the fall. So I don't know how they're paying for everything, because they never got the, what they asked for until, it was the fall, wasn't it?
Yeah.
It was, what was it, fifty-something hundred dollars or?
We paid forty-nine hundred. Forty-seven hundred, I believe, is what we gave them this year.
Yeah. So that jump had to do with the assessment and the insurance, yeah.
Counselor, one question. Are they still going to be required to have wheelchair access?
That's impossible, we just don't have the money. They'd have to shut the building down. I mean, they've looked at that and they've looked over in the corner trying to put a lift in there and everything else, but the cost of it and that building's old, it's just, I don't think it can happen. We would have to find a different building for the museum if that happened, I'm afraid. Any other comments? Well then, let's move on. The strategic priorities, is there anything we need to deal with on that? We delayed the pickleball until two thousand and twenty-one. Yes.
Now, I thought we agreed that we would look for some grant funding or some opportunities for that.
Yeah, totally.
For next year.
Yeah, CFAP, New Horizons and Community Foundation.
So that would, so if that all comes to fruition, it could happen as early as twenty twenty. However, we're not going to budget tax dollars for that.
Yeah, we took it out, we have the cash, but we'll start on those applications when.
Okay, just wanted to, just wanted to clarify.
I just have a quick question.
Over here, then over here.
Jeff, can you give me a sense a little bit with the solar, how far are they with installation?
So if you drive by, the panels started showing up today, they unloaded panels. Most of the racking, I want to say when I drove by, about three quarters of the racking is up.
I see.
They don't expect it now because of the weather, they've had to be live until February.
Okay.
It was December, it was Christmas, what Jason was telling us, but the guy on site's thinking February, when they are connected.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, the rec facility ad hoc committee had a meeting last night. Counselor Brown, Counselor Silk, do you want to get, fill us in on what happens, what's going on with that particular building? Arm this a little bit, whoever wants to.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Okay, good, thanks. I think it was productive. We've got to meet with administration and talk about actual numbers and what the bottom line is. Counselor Brown's waving that.
She came in and asked me for that too.
What the bottom line is in terms of what it will cost for our taxpayers. And the concern, of course, was the ongoing operational costs and that's what we've got to nail down and we've got to figure out how we're gonna fund that. So I think we'll kind of leave it in global terms until we get a chance to dig some deeper on those numbers. Does that satisfy?
To next meeting.
Do I understand there's still tentative plans for public consultation in February?
Yes.
Yes.
And that will be, you'll be ready by that time?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on priorities, yes?
I was just wanting to ask about the CARES grant I hear from.
Yeah.
What I hear you say, we're going through the motions and putting this in and we're really not gonna get it? Is that what I heard?
I don't think we have a good application.
Yeah?
Yeah, I think we have a strong application, it's just a very heavily subscribed grant. That's the fact of the matter. So the reason I think our grant is a good, or application, sorry, is a good one is that it shows support of, I think it was sixteen different jurisdictions of the project and the grant. And so I think it'll be looked on quite favorably, but it's just, it's a difficult grant because of how oversubscribed it is.
How many times have we ever gotten anything like this? Do we ever, do we very often get them or CFAP or?
We have little ones, yeah, oh yeah. Well, we can't apply for CFAP anymore, that's changed.
Oh, okay.
But, yeah, we, we get those competitive grants on project by project. Okay.
We're all wondering too about the grants and the new government and everything else. We don't know really what's gonna happen when we apply, if anything's gonna be available again.
One thing just for note for council, and just, we just got notice yesterday that we've got a Community Foundation of Last Bridge grant for the Nistapi Monument.
Oh.
They gave us fifteen thousand dollars. That's like the maximum I've ever seen them give out. So I really did need to talk to you about going to the grant presentation in ten days.
Okay, please, I'll be.
I just got everything yesterday, so.
I'll be glad to get that.
Just have to find another seventy thousand dollars.
Yeah, we're fifteen there and that's a small piece.
Moving forward.
You know, our town got another presentation the same day, is the Auxiliaries.
Okay.
Got six thousand dollars too for a project, so it's quite nice.
Okay, Counselor Barnes, you're on. Library, this is seven D.
Okay, if you look at that piece of paper in front of you there. Library has been mandated to have their budget in by the first of December, which they did. And this is their budget for this year. Basically, as Jeff has said, that it's, it's very flat compared to, same as last year. There were sixty-four bucks difference. And they, I, every time we meet and talk about budget and stuff, I've told them, hold the line as best you can. And, you know, their biggest concern is where it's going in the future. And I said, well, we've, you know, we've kind of outlined where it should go over the next three years
And I said, well, we've, you know, we've kind of outlined where it should go over the next three years and just don't try to get any surprises because it's not gonna go anywhere else. Just stay within the prescribed budget and, and they've made the con- they've made the comment, well, we'll try to do the best we can to stay well within that. And, and I, I feel that the, the library board is being fiscally responsible. They do the best they can to be very, very careful, um, with the monies that they get. And, um, I know that, um, oftentimes when it comes to, uh, staffing, part-time staffing, there's just not enough money in the budget to provide the hours that they would need. And Donna does a lot of those hours herself with no extra pay.
Okay, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
It seems to me that from the discussion with the, um, county, that they increase their donation.
What page do you want?
Five thou- no, I'm just asking you because I don't see it. It says municipal and provincial grants budgeted library income. But I don't see the, uh, county under ten thousand dollars in any of the figures.
Carson County Rural Services Grant?
That's, that should be which one.
The Chinook Arch one, but that's from the Carson County, right?
Well, I don't know.
No.
I don't think that's what it is.
Like it is.
You should have the, you should have a line that says, uh, something like County of Cardston. And, uh, donation, it's a donation, really.
Giving five thousand a year, now they've increased it to.
Yeah, and that's, that's.
Could you maybe ask?
Tough one, they haven't been forthcoming with a lot of money.
But they have been.
Yeah, but.
Let me, let me just finish this off, that, that Chinook Arch grant, services grant, in my understanding is that they consider that their grant, they get it from the province.
No.
And they pass, well, that's kinda what Robin explained to me. Cuz I don't know the other extra, I don't see it in here.
From the ICF meeting, I can tell you that I told us that they make a donation to the library.
Exactly.
In cash of ten thousand dollars beyond and above the Chinook Arch requisition.
Well, I'm going to have to.
Am I, am I saying that right?
Correct.
Agreed, and I'm not sure why even the five thousand.
Hasn't been showing up.
Never was shown in the budget and I'm kinda curious about that.
Find it, I'll have to, we'll have to ask that question.
Mr. Chairman, I guess, Joe, we didn't get that to the town last year, did we? And then include it to pay our requisition? I don't think so either, I think that happened once and then we straightened that around, I can remember a few years ago. So, yeah, mayor, we'll, we'll ask Donna where that's being.
Yeah, well, it's a good one, I'd like to know the answer to that too.
Because prior to this, they were donating five thousand a year and this year they were magnanimous and bumped it up to ten thousand.
Mm-hmm.
And don't expect any more.
And we're still in negotiations a little bit on that, so we'll see where that rolls.
But having said that, if you look under the fundraising donations, it's only thirty-one hundred dollars, so obviously.
That's not part of it.
No, it's not inside that, that's why I'm saying, where is that ten thousand dollars?
Well, councillor, bottom line is the town is donating or, not donating, paying about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the, towards the library every year. That's the library and the head librarian's wages, correct? Okay.
Yeah.
Anything further, councillor? But anyways.
But the wages is what constitute the biggest share of the line here.
Usually the case.
And so this is why it's not so much a program that are a problem, the problem is the wages. So that is where.
Yeah.
It needs to take a serious look at that.
Yeah. So, help me out, Donna, this a little bit, we have one full-time employee and the rest of them are part-time.
I believe that, I believe that.
Michelle's part-time.
Michelle, I think is part-time, but she has, I think she's got thirty hours a week. Because it's constant part-time, I believe that's what it is. Yeah. That. And then there's three or four other gals that work there as well, they all have part-time. Sometimes there's a student that they have, then they have some volunteers as well. But, uh, they're trying to follow the, the guidelines of the province with the, the wages and, and, uh, and trying to follow the town, um, with the, how they pay. Donna can explain that grid to you more tha- better than I can.
Well.
That's all.
I'm glad you're saying that, but if I heard the government riot, they're trying to have government, uh, wages rolled back five percent.
The students.
And I don't see, I don't see them roll back, right?
Well, they're trying, it hasn't been mandated yet.
Yeah, but.
When that comes, I guess that's gonna have to happen, right?
Well, because she's our employee, we, we're not, we're not the provincial government.
I mean, her, her, her wage is her wage, but the others, I don't know, how does it work?
We're working right now to amend our seasonal, uh, wage schedule. I know Donna looks at that a bit when she determines.
Yeah.
Part-time staff, so we're amending it down based on new minimum wage guidelines, so for those seventeen and under.
Okay.
So for twenty twenty seasonal, it comes down.
It won't be fifteen dollars an hour.
Thirteen.
It'll be thirteen.
Thirteen, okay. Not much, but a little bit.
It's a little bit.
And I, I guess that's what I'm saying with the wages, that Donna's trying to follow the town's.
Yeah.
Yeah, it has to be adjusted, this is probably not showing there.
Yeah.
Not from the figures I read.
Yeah. I think if we're considering any kind of rollback, that's something we need to talk about, obviously, not in this meeting, so, yeah.
I just wondered if, um, this group is a part of the staff association for the town or is it separate?
Separate.
Donna, but not the others.
Anything else councillor? Nope, well, thank you for that information, let's go to correspondence.
Thank you.
The what?
It's all thank yous.
It is. One is from Karen Olson saying what a wonderful evening the Carson Festival of Lights was. Uh, one is from Greg Burden, the Carson District Health Foundation thanking us for our donation to the golf fundraiser. And one very short one from the Legion of saying, great, thanks.
Yeah, what was that thanks for?
Money we give them for shopping.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I suppose it was referred to.
Councillor Brown.
I just wanted to, um, I got many, many phone calls about the lighting up of Main Street. And everyone is thrilled about it, I haven't heard one negative, they're just giddy. And special thanks to the Town of Cardston employees for all their hard work and the festival, Festival of Lights, all of their volunteers. Because honestly, it's fantastic.
It is.
I mean, it's, it's really, it just, like, um, Karen Olson wrote in her letter, it just brings the spirit right to Cardston, it's, it's amazing.
I really love the poles all wrapped in lights.
We've had a couple go out on us and we gotta figure out why.
Yeah, they're funny, one will be white or one will be red.
I had the same type of reaction. Very, very positive. The, uh, things going to happen, there's a store that is next to the bargain, uh, center there on Main Street. Bargain, barn on Main Street. That store that is empty right now is going to receive all the decorations that are being put in our state, uh, center this week. And it's absolutely stunning beauty, beautiful. When you see that, that's going to be a wonderful addition.
Where is that at? Right next to the bargain bar.
The old Hall Brothers Plumbing Building.
Pardon me?
The old Hall Brothers Plumbing Building.
Oh, okay, downtown here, yeah.
Of course, you haven't been around that long.
Edwards and Edwards, is it like?
Yeah, yeah, just beside that.
Parking lot of Reddy Mart.
North of, yeah, yeah, right there. Jack, she used to, she used to have a store right in that spot, anyhow, councillor Bangry.
Uh, I look at this letter from the, uh, Cardston and Health Foundation. Jeff, is that a consistent donation that we make to the Health Foundation or do they ask for something differently every year?
Well, this, this was a big one cuz it was donating all the fees for the golf course.
Right.
That cost us a lot.
It's a big donation.
Cuz we didn't take in any revenue on golf course that day.
And they make ten thousand dollars above and beyond.
I don't see that as an issue though, cuz it certainly is going to.
Community, I'm not denying that, it's just, no, we, that isn't a, a four dollar.
It's not a set.
No. Yes, councillor Selk.
I think we did make a determination as council that that wouldn't go to that specific organization every year.
Right.
That others could apply for that same consideration.
Yeah, I remember that.
Fair enough.
Is there anything else? If not, I'll maintain a motion to go.
Move to go into closed session.
No favor. Thank you, Corey.